Okay. Do you have a question?
Yes.
You may start, and the phone lines are open and going.
Okay, great. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton School Board meeting. I have a motion to open.
Make motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America. And to very public for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, I don't know if it's a public comments for agenda items only. Do we have any callers?
We do not. Thank you.
Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Superintendent's report and recommendations. Number one. Recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved that in compliance with the provisions of section thirty twelve of the education law and part thirty point three of the rules of the Board of Regents and upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Sarah Holden Smith to the administrative position of high school principal for the East Hampton High School tenure area high school principal, who holds a valid New York State certification in the high school principal tenure area for a probationary term of four years to commence August ninth, twenty twenty one, and expire at August eighth, twenty twenty five, and be paid an initial salary of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Say thank you.
We say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say, it is very rare as members of the school board that when we do something or news gets out that your phone rings up off the hook saying, "Great job." So I can't even say, like, on social media, on emails, how many people from the community came in saying, like, "Great job, great move." Anyway. And your email, your email out to the community was, was wonderful.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
So the honeymoon is still on, Sarah. I hope it lasts all year, but probably not.
Well, I'm overwhelmed and humbled, but outpouring of support. So, and thrilled to be here, so, as we all are. So thank you so much for the opportunity and for your face with me, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
And number two.
And you don't have to say. You're welcome to.
Brian, you do.
And then we want to welcome your mother. Now, she was a wonderful asset in Sagava. And I already said to her, she raised a good person. And God bless her, because my wife suffers me, and I think you suffer that guy there. Because he's probably here as crazy as I am.
Thank you.
Number two, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Michael Mangovi is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary chemistry teaching position tenure area science grade seven to twelve, who holds a valid New York State certification in the after said tenure area for a probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and annual salary of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, step one D. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Michael Galetta is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary biology teaching position tenure area science grade seven to twelve, who holds a valid New York State certification in the after said tenure area for a probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and annual salary of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, step one D. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Brandon Nix is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary social studies teaching position tenure area social studies grade seven to twelve, who holds a New York State certification in the after said tenure area for probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and annual salary of seventy-one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars, step three D. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Peter, did you have the phone?
Yep.
Is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary foreign language Spanish teaching position tenure area Spanish grade seven to twelve, who holds a valid New York State certification in the after said tenure area for probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty four, and annual salary of a hundred and four thousand thirty-two dollars, step eleven G. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Matthew Tooman is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary foreign language Spanish teaching position tenure area Spanish grade seven to twelve, who holds a valid New York State certification in the after said tenure area and is subject to impending his obtaining a FLESC extension grades one to six for probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and annual salary of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, step one D. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Joseph Malika is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary English teaching position tenure area English grade seven to twelve, who holds a valid New York State certification in the after said tenure area for probationary term to commence September first, twenty twenty one, and expire as of August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and annual salary of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twelve, step one D. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Sorry, did I? Number eight. Recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Nicholas DeLuca is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary mathematics position as a leave replacement commencing on September first, twenty twenty one, through honor about December twenty-third, twenty twenty one, and annual salary based on fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Madison Stala is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a secondary mathematics position as a leave replacement effective September first, twenty twenty one, through honor about October first, twenty twenty one, at a per diem rate of two hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents based on B.A., step one. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten. Recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved Kimberly Mulrain is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to an elementary school special education teaching position as a leave replacement effective September first, twenty twenty one, through honor about October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty one, at a per diem rate of two hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents based on B.A., step one. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eleven, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District pursuant to rule fourteen of the Suffolk County Civil Service Commission and upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools does hereby appoint Shannon Trulies to the position of power professional for a probationary period of twenty-six weeks commencing on September first, twenty twenty one, and is to be paid an annual salary based on twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, step one J. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District pursuant to rule fourteen of the Suffolk County Civil Service Commission and upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools does hereby appoint Nancy Ayala to the position of power professional for a probationary period of twenty-six weeks commencing on September first, twenty twenty one, and is to be paid an annual salary based on twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, step one J. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number thirteen. Recommended that the board approve the following appointments for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year starting with the K to twelve summer school program and going down to instructional substitute Jaclyn Bates at certified instructional rate of pay. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen, recommended that the board accept the letter of resignation from Christine Taylor, family and consumer science teacher, effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Does that mean if you want to talk about that, I guess, anybody has some questions? Number fifteen, recommended that the board accept the letter of resignation from Tamara Palmer, teaching assistant, effective July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty one. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, recommended that the board approve the following resolution. It hereby resolve that the Board of Education accept the letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement from Lorraine Talmadge from her position as a school nurse effective closing business day, August thirty-first, twenty twenty one. No motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you, Lorraine. Number seventeen. Recommended that the board approve the agreement between East Hampton Union Free School District and Land Tech Group, Inc., in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and thirty-eight, four, five hundred and fourteen, thirty, yeah, thousand and thirty-eight dollars for the purpose of providing sports courts resurfacing and amenities services in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eighteen, recommended that the board approve the shared services agreement between East Hampton Union Free School District and Montauk Union Free School District in the amount of one, oh. You said Glasgow. Fourteen hundred and forty dollars per week for transportation services of Montauk students to and from East Hampton School Districts twenty twenty-one summer school program in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said shared services agreement. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nineteen, recommended that the board approve the consultant agreement between East Hampton Union Free School District and Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk County for the purpose of providing professional consulting services in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per workshop and not to exceed four workshops for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said consultant agreement. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Number twenty, recommended that the board approve the Brown and Brown of New York, Inc., Business Associate agreement for the purpose of accepting the regulations issued by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services under HIPAA in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement. Can I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-one, recommended that the board approve the following change order. Change order number one, A one A, document G seven O one in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and four cents. Contractor WHM Plumbing and Heating Contractors, Inc., contract number three plumbing for the East Hampton High School commercial kitchen. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor? Can we, can we ask before we do, can we ask? Can you explain that? I'm sorry, facilities committee probably knows it. I apologize.
That's the gaslight. That's the gaslight.
The gas, the gas.
Well, the, again, I know it was more, making it last.
All right, thank you. Uh, to be too, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, old business.
No, just go back. I mean, we obviously, the board saw, and we reviewed it personnel. We had a lot of new hires this year due to replacements. And I think we hit this on our last meeting regarding a lot of the staff. We've had a, we had a little bit of mini exodus of staff for a variety of reasons. Lot, lot travel base, living, you know, living on the other side of the canal. We kind of started that discussion, had a really colorful discussion, which I'll bring up, we'll kind of discuss again in September and talk about having a forum on. Right now, Tim's office is put together. I think we're over hiring and replacing over thirty staff members altogether, the majority being instructional, as that compares to the last few years. Last year, from the summer board agendas from July and the two Augusts, there were nine. The year before, we were at around twenty. So this is a lot. So I just want to, you know, most of these are replacements. Obviously, there are, there are two leaves there, which are typical for this year, for this time of year. But again, it's becoming a, a, a challenge hiring people. I think the numbers speak for themselves. We're, we're having some difficulty retaining.
Turnover retention rate.
Yep. Which is something that I know the board's aware of, and we will continue to discuss.
I think we should set a date. I like, I think we should talk and set a date for some sort of forum, and what would that look like? And who would be invited? And what were you thinking, October?
I think we were thinking October.
Yeah.
I think October.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea, because shockingly, we're already in August.
Yes.
So if we could get something on the calendar and put together the agenda, and then also how, we've had some conversations with, you know, about asking our attorney for, you know, the propriety of, we can spend money on.
Yep.
Right, right.
Tomorrow, Keith and I have a call with our attorney based on that to discuss that.
Right. Maybe, would it be pre-Columbus Day or post-Columbus Day? I guess we should set the calendar.
Yeah, let me look at the calendar, see what events, was homecoming also falls in October?
Right, yeah.
So I'll try to, maybe that could be part of homecoming. Homes and housing. But I will definitely.
Would it be a special meeting? Or would we want it to piggyback with one of our regular board meetings where we have a lighter agenda?
I think ideally a special meeting. You know, because we've done like a workshop meeting before.
Right.
Where people can actually participate in it and, you know, present and ask questions.
Right.
And I think that if we think about structuring it that way, it would be really good.
Yep.
And I think maybe we can talk.
Let's see if they can.
Yep. Yep, I'll take care of that.
Uh, new business. Reopening of schools and COVID-19 pandemic states.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring the board up to date. As of today, we've received no official guidance from the state. We've only had statements from the, the governor, but we, the superintendent did receive a memo from Betty Rosa, who's the commissioner of education, this past Friday. Just some of the highlights from her. The department will, so long as allowed by public health officials, schools should be open for in-person teaching and learning, and students should be in school. Again, that's what she is saying. Schools should be prepared for, if there are closures or if it's declared a public health emergency, schools must be prepared for remote instruction. I think we, that's not an issue for us. The other thing is, students, the department will not, will not require student schools that are open full-time in-person to provide online remote instruction. So basically, the department is saying we should handle those situations case by case, which we get to talk about a little further. I'm sure we'll get some more guidance. Hopefully, there, wishful thinking, there's some more guidance out by the end of this week from our, the New York State Department of Health or the Suffolk County. I have a feeling, though, and it's just my opinion, that it's going to be left to the local, local school districts to, to make these decisions. I've invited our, our, two of our nurses, Wendy Gearing and Jaclyn Mazinski, to come and kind of offer some advice, some their, their professional opinion on, you know, what we should and should do and what they think. The first thing, I think we all agreed, that we're opening schools in September. I mean, in-person education. The, the bigger question really becomes the masking. I have spoken to our chief medical officer, who is recommending the masking of students pre-K through, uh, through twelve, and then I'll turn it over to him.
I think we're definitely going to be masked. Probably the outside without masks again. I don't know, if they don't give us guidance on temperature taking, I think we should pop out of that. During the COVID, we were just discussing, we didn't pick up one fifth of COVID with the temps last year.
Right.
Higher year. So if that's an option, I think, you know, if it's, you know, the times up, quite honestly.
It's a waste of time.
Yeah, it's a waste of time and money, yeah. So maybe both COVID with the, with the temperature.
No temperature.
Yeah. So I don't feel like that's an option.
I have to say, the staff was greedy last year about setting kids down. It means that they thought, this one died last week, this one doesn't. Don't feel right today. So we got more kids that way than.
And Wendy, do you feel, my, my first initial reaction? Because I know the mask debate has been everywhere. I mean, you have to be living in a cave not to realize what's going on, especially across Long Island with masking. I was, my recommendation to the board was, if we start the year in masks, and even if it's not mandated, if we do, I just think we should be smart and continue to revisit these monthly. I don't think we're locked into anything unless we're told we have to be. That's just the way I'm doing it.
I think it's far better to start masks and take it away.
Right.
And, you know, let everyone come on masks and then.
Yep, right. Start it all over.
Everybody needs to be on a short leash to start.
I, I'm hoping it's only a matter of a few months, you know? That would be my question.
A couple of questions. Number one, like, I just got a note from Mrs. Talmadge saying, like, "Oh, you know, your son can't get back to school until he gets his second meningitis vaccine," which I had forgotten to do. So we were in Southampton this week getting a second meningitis vaccine. So my question too is, I know a lot of the kids that are twelve and up have gotten vaccines, but I certainly, I, I imagine it's not everybody. I, so I have two questions. Number one, under HIPAA rules, do we have at least the ability to track who has been vaccinated? And essentially, that would be useful to you. Question number two is, I, I, I know Hampton Bay, we've talked a little bit about this, like, can, like, now, this week, I know Southampton Hospital has a clinic open right now, Tuesday through Thursday, for free, from twelve to six. Can we?
For vaccinations or for?
Correct, vaccinations, no, for vaccinations. So can we do that here, like, right now? We'd get kids who'd have at least one vaccine in for free quickly before school starts. If, it's, it's an hour to get to Southampton right now. And some of the predictions, maybe you could just talk about.
I mean, would you do that at the school?
At, at the C V C H already.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
No, we had two vaccine clinics, basically, for twelve and up, for the C V C H. Not just the C H. And you could still go to CVS and even get, both CVS and East Hampton and get twelve and up for Pfizer shot for anyone.
Oh, Southampton location. Go ahead.
Yeah, we might have, I've been speaking to Southampton Hospital. Robert Ross is working on getting us some doses that we could have here to, to do and open up. So we might be able to, to do that. He's working on getting the Pfizer doses, and we'll see if he comes through with that. That would be great. Like, Anthony, Madatuck had it before.
Maybe we have a school physical coming up. Maybe you have a vaccine clinic at the same time as a school physical does, if that's not too much for you.
And I know you wouldn't be administering.
I mean, that's, that's a, yeah, just an issue. Because I mean, we're having enough students.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next week, it's Monday and Tuesday, and then we do the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fourth.
Are we allowed to know vaccine status of students?
Um, we're not having asked, like, COVID. Vaccines, you know. Are getting, parents who are just sending it in for regular vaccination. So we are putting it in. But, you know, it would be nice at some point to know what our rate is, like, if it gets to about seventy percent.
I, I just, I just think, you know, some parents are sort of saying, "Don't do a mask policy." You know, I just started masking this week again inside, not to everybody, but I think that if, if people want to, I, I, I think that our masking policy should be related to our percentage of vaccinated kids. I mean, I don't think we can make an intelligent masking policy unless we know who's vaccinated. If we have, you know, fifty percent of the kids that are not vaccinated, we should be wearing masks, period.
And we also don't know how many of our staff is vaccinated.
Correct.
I mean, I have an idea, but, you know, we don't have a lot of that.
So I don't see how we make it a really intelligent decision to have non-masking unless we know who's vaccinated.
Yeah. You're not, and, and again, we're, you know, in lieu of legislative actions, You're not, and, and again, we're, you know, in lieu of legislative actions with vaccinations with kids and staff, we can't, we're really, our hands are really tied. The other one that we're looking at is also testing. So, you know, if we're able to just start testing. Federal government was awarded the state, you know, I don't know, probably in lieu of $100 million for testing. We don't know what's going to happen with that. I completed a survey about a month and a half ago regarding the ability of our school to, to initiate testing. And would we be interested in testing? Nothing's come of that yet. So again, we're, we're still waiting.
But we can bring back, if something's in hospital, agree the testing here?
Is not, they're not, they are not plan, I spoke to them yesterday, they are not planning on that. That could, again, it's very fluid, it could, it could conceivably change. You know, I saw, I drove by, Tim and I drove by the town's, the town's, and there was a long, a lot of people. So, you know, I don't think the hospital has a clear picture of that yet. I'll speak to Robert again, Robert Ross next week again.
When they use more capacity, they will.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, we're open to it.
What about when, is the policy going to still be the same when a student does test positive? And they have to keep going with it, tested it for quarantine, you know, all those quarantine protocols and testing protocols for those situations?
I want to know that. When the kid gets infected and is in school, we're not going to be as isolated as we were. So what is it going to mean?
I guess my question is, is for Wendy, like, well, he. They get vaccinated?
In theory, we won't have to quarantine as many kids and, and staff because they're vaccinated.
Right.
But if you're unvaccinated and you're exposed, you're going to get quarantined.
So in that instance, someone would have to tell their vaccination status.
Yeah.
Right, because you'd have to prove you're vaccinated or you're not to quarantine.
Right.
Or you have to prove that you've had COVID within the last three months.
Right.
So a, a kid, a kid has a positive test. He's been in school. A parent says, well, my kid's vaccinated, she can come back. Are we going to be able to quarantine? Do we have to quarantine the whole class he was exposed to or?
No, it's contact tracing, just like we did all last year. And the ones who are vaccinated will not be quarantined. That is out of his nap. You know, this could all change.
Right.
We were taken from the pandemic part of health comes out of something.
But the, but if the kid, the kid gets tested positive, even if they're vaccinated, not vaccinated, whatever it is, they, they have to quarantine.
Right.
Quarantine the source.
Any unvaccinated.
Until there's two negative tests.
They have to quarantine. So the vaccinated ones can return to school unless they're symptomatic.
So here's another question related to testing. Here's another question for you. So we're going to be in-person classes, right? I think all of us feel like it's the only, you know, whatever. So let's say, and, and, and my own preference, which we have totally discussed, but I think you said is, is that we do not have an online option for kids this year, right? So those kids were losing.
Correct.
So here's my question. We don't have an online option, which we did last year. We have a quarantined class. How are we, how are we dealing with quarantined kids if we don't have an online option?
We are, we are working through that now. So there are two different remote options. So what could happen? So one of the, the advice from the New York State School Board's attorneys at a conference I just went, was that, was for the remote option, that kids or parents who, you know, if your, your spouse, your mother, your, your parent has, is susceptible immune deficient, and you can't send your child to school, there's going to have to be a, basically, medical documentation became why you have, want to stay. Oh, we are not going to have a live stream, so we are going to have to look at, we have a multitude of technology and computer-based programs. We have an alternative learning center here that we can look at. There's also the commissioner app also said, maybe reach out to the BoSies and see what they have also, but we, I think we'll be fine. Quarantine is the other piece. So when we quarantine kids, we're going to have to, and all the principals received an email from me today regarding on point people for, for quarantined students. So depending on the length of quarantine, it's almost going to be like you're out of school for, what would we normally do if a child had the chickenpox? You know, again, there's, there's definite, different ways to look at it. We've, we're looking at it from the perspective of not only just, obviously, all of our teachers have booked classrooms. Teacher would reach out, a, a, a remote teacher, reach out, you're out for five days, here's your work, here's you do, you know, whatnot. The other piece is to look at it from the home tutoring perspective on the amount of, because we did not use a lot of home tutoring, how much maybe we are able to provide if it's three kids, you know, every month, or five kids every two weeks. Hey, can we provide additional tutoring, remote tutoring for those, those students? So the principals are all looking at it, and obviously, they're very different because from the middle school to the secondary to six through 12, you know, kids don't as much need that, you know, they're self-driven, they can get through five days. The elementary piece is a different thing. Parents definitely have more challenges there, and we're looking at it different, kind of differently on each level, but I've asked all the principals to look at it. You know, but I think for the most part, if we have low numbers of medically fragile students, I mean, I think we could probably provide, you know, levels of tutoring for those students, just like we would have done if, if your child had mono. What would we do? We would tutor that child.
Right.
You know, we, we now with the Zoom capacity, the Google capacity, we're able to provide a different level of service. It's, it's not as inconvenient as meeting at the library, catching up with a tutor. A teacher might be more, I think we'll have, a teacher will be more willing to.
If this kid is, has got COVID, we can't.
We can't have.
Somebody go through.
All right. So if, if, if your child, so if my child had COVID and is sick at home, then we, I think we need to handle that exactly like we would handle somebody who's had a grand illness. And what would we do? We would provide 10 hours of tutoring, two hours a day per week.
But that would not, not.
Not in person, no, no, no. No, and there's also the other component though. If I'm sick at home, I might not want to be able to Zoom. So we've always done it, so if a child, God forbid, is hospitalized for any reason, we don't just not provide tutoring. When that child comes back, we can, we will have tutoring, your, your, that would be available to the family. So you could catch up, oh, you don't have to take all 10 hours. Okay, here's, you know, I have math, Johnny needs to work on math. So we could provide that, we're, we're capable of doing it. And I, we've had trouble finding tutors in the past, but generally speaking, that has always been that in-person component of tutoring, you know? But now, if we have the ability to tutor via Zoom, via Google, I hate to keep saying these un, unlike, you know, modalities, I don't love them, but it is a more efficient way to reach out and get to these kids, whereas, you know.
And it's safe for everyone.
I was just going to say, we're not talking about a lot of kids either. We got very good at contact tracing.
Yes.
So when we do that well, we really don't have to quarantine a lot of kids. Like, there were schools that quarantined whole classrooms still, you know, into the spring. We didn't do that, you know? And we felt like everyone did their job right, and everything went well. You wouldn't have to quarantine one kid if, like, everyone's masked, you know? And, and we had that a lot. We had cases where we didn't have to quarantine.
Right. I have two questions for you. Will the Plexi glass be back in, in force?
I don't think so.
I wasn't planning on, yeah. Late in the year, one of the.
They said we could take it down.
They, they.
Store it away.
Yeah. We've stored all the Plexi, so you won't have Plexi. I will tell you this, there's two things you should consider. Karen's already worked out staggered lunches at John Marshall. So if she has to, because they are unmasked in lunch, so we did lunches in the classroom, we will be able to do, let's say, the fifth grade has lunch. Well, only the, half of the fifth grade might go to cafeteria one day, and the other, they eat in their classroom, then they rotate. So they're all getting that lunch. Charlie and Sarah, shouldn't know yet, but we are, we are not going to put together, Charlie is not putting together his library. It gives more of a challenge because of the space combined. So he's going to leave that open in his library. Sarah, what we did now is, it's open now, but we are kind of, when Mike is going to redo things, we're putting everything on wheels. So we can move, and if we need that additional space in that library, which she probably will, she'll have that as, as an additional lunch space. The other big thing out there is, is band especially. And chorus will be able to go outside a lot, space out. We will kind of monitor that. Charlie's already talked about, they're going to be outside. There are special masks, you know, for, for this. We bought them last year as the, as the spring approach. The, the question with that is, it's, it's not as prudent in the middle school as, because the kids are a little younger and a little not as careful, plus they're earlier in the game, you know, with performances. Chris Minato is working on, on those things and those nuances and space. Space is going to be another thing with that. Again, we have the tents at John Marshall. Charlie knows that if you need tents in the front of the middle school, you could get them, the rental cost for those was not prohibitive. I think we're going to get Sarah for her cafeteria, the outside. We have picnic tables still out there, so, and the wait-in lunch periods are in the high school, the numbers are pretty balanced. So, you know, hopefully, they're spread out. But that is, that's a time, I mean, I know we, when we, when, I remember in the beginning, when Wendy would talk to the DOH, she would say, well, you know what, put you over the top, you were, you were unmasked in lunch for 30 minutes rather than 20. So like, wherever, you know, so those nuances, I think we've become, thanks to these two ladies, very proficient in, in, in doing. And Lorraine and Barbara, being able to kind of make those necessary changes. Classroom size, again, it's going to be three feet, it's not going to deviate, I would, I would thank, and we're fine.
Another question, oh, actually, that was another question. Retrieve, what's happening with pre-K? Are we?
She is planning full-day pre-K.
Okay.
Nothing's changed yet. Yeah.
And then how many sections do we have so far?
Tim, what does she have? Does she three or four?
I think it's a little less than 60 full days. I think she's planning on four sections.
Four full-day sections?
Just to, you know, be ahead of any potential size issues. There's also, you know, typically two built-in, so just to plan maybe how many people would be at yourself. You know, again, she and Russell at the elementary school, and Charlie knows that we're planning the, you know, spreading the kids out, balancing the classes so that they're not so afraid of, you know, as Adam said, the lunch and the music things are something that they're still playing with, and then they react. You know, you go to high school with a tent for it. We have probably till October to let some of this play itself out with the open space. So they're a great job thinking of the what ifs, to not have the Plexi glass, you know? And, you know, weigh the benefits of the mask if we're not.
And then the weather, maybe get that rid of it and like.
And John Marshall, yes. John Marshall has the middle school high school.
I mean, I'm ready.
He constructed for that, presumably, second one.
And then the last question is, Wendy and Jackie, what are you seeing with under 12 vaccinations? What are you, what are you thinking, or what are you hearing about that?
I don't see that happening for quite a while, so I'm going to come this year. So we're going to base stats on an inch of vaccination. I think that's 70%, it's just not.
Yeah.
So it's good. For the tents, I think to extend the life of them, I think we should talk about, depending on how the weather is, because the weather's been pretty mild for the most part for the last few years, but, you know, like last year, where we had a couple of little, two snow days and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But I think we get to maybe December if we add the heaters.
Yeah.
I mean, those heaters, when you work in those tents at a wedding, and weddings in like, you know, April and October under tent, and those, those heaters that they pump in there keep it warm. So.
As long as we don't have to put the sides up, and I just have to find out from the fire marshal what we're allowed to do, but we can extend it. And listen, the bottom line is, the elementary school is going out to recess, you know, all the time.
Right.
You know, so, you know, and phys ed here.
If you're sitting in for 40-minute class and you can add the heat.
Yep.
We can, we might be able to send it a month or two. So, yeah, they're, they're really efficient, and it's, it's worth it to do it.
And other questions, and I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds with all the logistics, but like, for the high school, for example, are we going to have lockers again this year? Because there were no lockers last year. Are we going to have?
We're planning no lockers.
We're getting lockers. Everything else, so people should anticipate a fairly normal return to school this year.
The, the, and I'm glad you brought that up. The, the idea, and, and this goes into the whole mask discussion and keeping schools open. The idea is return to normalcy. When I say that, I don't mean is we're going to come back to school and we're going to not have lockers, we're not going to have activities. The goal is to just get the kids in school having a normal, or as close to a normal year, meaning all the activities, everything we've always done, you know, with, with things to, to go forward with. We want to be able to maintain and do that. We don't want to be shut down. So lockers, you know, home, all the things, the, the church that they own in, 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 you know, in the middle school. John Marshall thinks we want to, we want to do that, we don't want to deprive the kids of anything this year. I think that would be a worst-case scenario. And I'm, I'm hopeful, wishful thinking that we do not have to do any of that. That we want to be back home. You know, these kids deserve a normal year.
Yeah, but I, I would imagine, we'll get from Section 11, and if we start our training, we're going to get directives about masks. And people would like to say, oh, well, we have a school no masks. We might be forced to start with masks.
Yes.
We might maybe not force it up, we might decide to start with masks because it's safer. We know that.
Correct.
We know we can't mandate vaccinations, but we can encourage it, and we can do everything to do that.
Yes. In lieu of, again, in lieu of legislative action, we can, the vaccination idea, we could promote them. We could, we could promote them as much as possible, but we are not going to be able to mandate anything unless the legislature acts. And that could even be Suffolk County, I, I'm told, it seems like all the stuff I'm reading, that we could, will be if that happens. But I'm going to be very honest, you know, to the public and to, to the board, I don't see that happening. I don't see the state government, and I don't see the county government because of the, the issue being so politicized, coming out and making a, a decision that, you know, which is, and, and again, the president of New York State School Board said the same thing. He said it much nicer than I, Rob. They, you know, basically are absolving themselves of making a decision that's in the best interest of kids. So if they felt nobody needs to wear masks and stuff like that, and because the science says it, they will not go on that ledge and do that. They're going to leave it to, I believe, the local school boards to make those decisions. That is my opinion. It could, it could change in a week. It could all change, or it could all be, you know, but I just don't want to, you know, I don't want anybody to be surprised about what will happen. And I feel like I'm just waiting for something to come, the superintendents have been waiting and waiting and waiting, and nothing has come. And we're now in August, where, you know, we're going into the third year of, of the pandemic, and we've learned a lot. And God, you know what, we're in a good place. You know, we have a top-notch medical personnel, we're being advised correctly, but we're going in the same thing without the guidance. So what, you know, I wouldn't doubt, you know, by Friday, 50-page document from New York State Education Department, and a 70-page from CDC, and 100-page from the Suffolk County DOH, then I have to cross-refer, reference with these, these, those ladies. And, you know, so.
And the report that we have to then report back by, you know, August 26th.
Right, yes. And then we need public health, teachers' input, SRPA input, you know, so we're late in the game. But we are really, I, we, listen, we are full steam ahead of real big, and I think the biggest thing that we will have to decide locally, which is the mask. That is the biggest decision that will occur. Not that we're in school, but we're, we're planning.
Can we make that decision?
We, I mean, unless the board feels differently, the commissioner of Ed says, you guys need to be in school.
No, but my point is, in terms of masks, that decision.
Oh, no, I, that's, no, I think we're still.
Well, I think the recommendation of the nurses begin with masks. My vote would be to begin with masks. I don't know what anybody else would be.
Yeah, I agree.
I would follow the direction.
Our chief, and our chief medical officer has advised that.
Unless there's anybody that's.
Yeah, and so we have, we have a quorum of the board here, so we, we guarded the board. And if our nurses are recommending that we start that way, and our chief medical officer is, we start that way, it's a decision.
I know Barbara and Ray, we had talked to as well, and I think.
And Jackie was too. There are 86,000 new infections.
Yeah, I think you could say we're going to try to normalize things this next year, but there's a strong possibility, probability that we're going to stop with masks.
I do think we should say we're starting with masks.
We're starting with masks.
Yeah, I don't think it was a probability, I think we should say, we're starting with masks. But I think the other message to parents is to get people, because I think a lot of people are worried about the slippery slope of going back to a motive. Right, there's like no certainty.
No, for any of the board, that, I, I, unless we have some catastrophe where, where kids are really getting sick and are hospitalized, the, the, the risk of being in school in this is.
Low.
Low. And the value of being in school outweighs everything. We cannot go back to hybrid remote learning. It's not the way. There are too many kids that have been adversely affected, socially, emotionally, their mental health has been damaged, their, you know, their academic sheet, let's say their academic, but their, their learning and their academic well-being has been adversely affected. And if, if there is no way, we should be going back to having kids, it's just not the right way to. We should do everything in our power, and I think, you know, the nurses, we have always, trust me, we need to be in school. And I think that's what we will say.
Yeah. Okay, number nine, public comments. Do we have any callers?
We do not, thank you.
Number 10, motion to adjourn.
I made a motion this morning.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor? Good night, thank you.